Okay, Mr. Burdolph, approval of the monthly meeting of August 19th, 2021.
Can you start me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Now with this new going on, what we have to do, we have to make a motion if we add anything to our agenda, that's something new with the state regulations in Right to Know Act. So I want to do a motion to add assessment permit to our agenda.
What do you mean?
I'll make a motion, Adam.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to add assessment permit to our agenda. Something new 24 hours, correct me Jamie, prior to the meeting, it has to be posted, the name, what, 24 hours after the meeting?
Um, 24 hours, the agenda has to be posted out of the building and on the website, and if we add anything to the agenda, I have to post any one tomorrow.
That was at last, yesterday at the convention, that was PSETs, people there, and that wasn't anything.
Where are you approached to that? Oh, in the building, okay.
Yep, yep.
Whose idea was this, Director Governor?
Sunshine Hall.
Sunshine Hall, the people are always raising heck above it.
And you wonder where Bob's been.
Yeah, but I said, PSETs talked a lot about yesterday at the convention.
Do you have paperwork for that? Does that apply to all of the boards as well?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have to have paperwork on that, because we don't know.
They will, they, I sent it to, we sent it to Sharon.
We already did it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good here, that's added on. Okay, we're gonna move in, approve of the minutes from the August 19th, 2021 meeting. Do we have any questions on that August 19th monthly meeting? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second, Director? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the minutes from the August 19th, 2021 monthly meeting. Okay, visitors' comments. Alex, good. Dana?
Good.
Linda?
Good.
Julie, good?
Joe, what's going on with the grayed and the dead cell?
It's going, it's on our agenda here, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that'll be coming up here, it's on our...
And another thing, once the bridge, I got people asking me, they need loads of firewood, they need a cement truck across the Cali, is it gonna, when's that gonna open?
Actually, we're scheduled for an October 13th inspection. Yesterday, when I went to the meeting convention, Cali was there and approached the people there about it. I said, this work's been done, and people were asking about, when's it gonna open? And he said, well...
They're gonna recertify first, aren't they?
Well, we just, we gotta get the work done in time to get it done, so we figured, okay, we met what they wanted done, they should come and inspect it, but it's not on their agenda till October to do it.
Okay, what convention were you at then?
L County Supervisors Convention, yep.
Good, you're on it, Ken.
No, like I said, all I did is one way or the other.
Yeah, but...
Anything else, Joe?
No, that's good.
Good. Mr. Wonderley, anything?
I've got lots.
You've got lots?
Yeah, but I'm going to, I'll just leave it with the fact that Professor Watts told me that an arrow with no target is non-essential. I have no target, and that's all that's gone.
Okay, Fran, good now. Nancy, good. Lil?
Uh, anyone on this cell phone, or anything?
I haven't heard anything yet. I've been telling...
I turned on my cell phone last night, and I had three bars.
What, carry?
This is a Verizon tower.
Yeah. It is, I thought it was T-Mobile.
Nope, actually, I can tell you, this is when they first started on it. Lana Colvin was working at the center, and I was picking up the meals for my mother, and I asked her about it, and she said, it is a Verizon and all this, but they did, after they started, there was some permit where they had to wait, what, 40 days before they could finish it, and it went through all that. The land is not over there anymore, so I don't, until somebody says something, but that's...
So you don't have any contact form, or?
No.
No, we just had to permit when they started.
That was, yeah, but far as up and running, that's, that's all I know about it.
Okay, that's all, I'm just curious.
Anything else, Keith?
Uh, no.
Okay, let's move on to approval of the bills.
I do have a question about the bills.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I got more, I got more.
Uh, I got, uh, medical insurance, UPMC, $7,006.27, and you also have the bridge
at $7,006.27, is that eight in the same?
Ah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Good catch.
Good eye there, sir, he's plotted it up.
You can feed the law much, right?
I say Keith, wasn't that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was glad you caught that, really.
Uh, it struck me funny, it's true of me, I don't know.
I mean, I just looked broad-eyed and seen, I started going through where we got some which, what, it's the dirt and gravel, big part of it.
While we're waiting, I did have a comment. The tea berry sign out there needs painted, what it plays, right here.
Oh, played by Linda's.
Yeah, yeah. Give him some more paint. Give somebody some more paint.
What did it say, what?
Says, you can't read it, oh.
I'm having kids do something.
No, they're not all we are.
That's right, it's why I got...
Yeah.
Is which one?
Keith.
Three five.
What was it, in?
Sixty twenty-eight point five five.
Thank you.
Maybe something always different, so, but actually, we'd be looking for all 90,000 now.
Eighty-nine thousand nine hundred two dollars each, I exclusive.
That's good.
Eighty-nine two each, yeah.
That's what she gets.
Any other questions on the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills with the change for future, so it reflects $6,028.58, and the total being $89,902.82.
All who's in favor? Motion carried, pay the bills, eighty-nine nine zero two eight two. Uh, the treasures report. And actually, on the bills too, the dirt and gravel, there's like, what, almost 34,000, so that's all reimbursed back to us, so drops it down.
Okay, treasures part. General fund, balance as of August 19th, was $219,739.51. Balance as of September 16th, was $174,801.31. State fund, balance as of August 19th, was $173,402.35. Balance as of September 16th, was $173,420.21. Playa balance as of September 16th, $13,991. Capital reserve, balance as of September 16th, was $121,656. State fund CD, $40,616. General fund CD, $85,179. Paying, payment for the month were $44,965.81.
Any questions?
What's left of the bills, has to be changed, right?
I mean, yeah, it should be, um, the total balance for the general fund is 174,801.31.
Any questions on the treasury?
I got a question, your, on this gaming commission here, for 1,035, what's that?
That's, uh, where they pay your...
For your license, or something?
Yeah, every year, for how much property owned in a township by the King Commission, they only pay X amount per acre compared to...
Well, that's something to do with how much... No, that should be the 13,000, that's not the 13,000, or 1,035.
Oh, okay, I know, what is, I don't...
Yeah, 1,035.77. That's probably your share of fines for the year, possibly.
Oh, that could be, yeah. Yeah, I can't answer that one, I don't know without...
For fines, that's pretty something. In particular, I'd like the state police, they get portion of fines, every year, you get.
Yeah, it's same as the one we get from the state, from the state police.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, okay, I, I...
Don't quote me on that, I'm just pretty sure.
Jamie, I have a question.
Okay.
Um, no, you're not, you're, fine, the bridge expenses are being reimbursed from the county?
As far as I know, yeah.
Well, yes, they are.
Okay, I didn't keep them, everything for that.
But, yeah, we kept separate, and well, it's a reimbursement grant.
Yeah.
So...
For bill, though, yes.
Yeah.
We were allowing, like, 12,000?
Seventy-nine thousand.
Yeah, they do.
Or no, they gave us for that?
That's not the right number, that's not the right number.
So we went out, they gave us the bridge, they gave us 1,500 for a hammock.
Okay, 79,000, that was it.
Yes.
And as you spend the money, you need to submit for reimbursement.
Okay, I did.
So you'll need to contact Tracy.
Okay.
Over planning, and find out how they want you to submit, they may have a form or something, but now that we're actually incurring expenses, we want to get that, because you don't want to wait till next year when we're working on it again and get reimbursed for this, they're probably gonna want it in the year that they incur.
Okay. Okay, anything else in the treasures report? Okay, we can leave the correspondence.
He counts water authority, eight minutes, he counts power authority, eight minutes, he counts fire company, a letter, um, Phil, the pandemic, lots of funds, Ron, Razor, you basically, Schneider, um, letters to supervisors that you guys saw last night, but I, I don't know many of them.
Okay, we can go on to the road maintenance and equipment maintenance reports, see if there's any questions on that. I think we're ready to finish now with the road crew?
Uh, I...
Is that what I'm seeing, or something?
When they put some number fours in the ditch, you have... When they did the final, when they were down here to look at it, they actually added maybe feet to it, does that sound right, Jamie? Roughly, maybe feet?
Of more height.
They wanted more stone, further up the hill.
Yeah. There's the head ball, there's the head ball, that they need to add more.
Right. In other words, the conservation office added some more to the project, they wanted to see more down there, you know, in the fundamentals. So they're supposed to finish it up this week.
They're also getting back to the gray here, the dead cell, wasn't Gibson supposed to get that, or somewhere down the line?
We got that, Joe, coming under old business, we can talk about that. Okay, now we're going to old business, flood issues courtesy run, nothing changed, we...
Administered signed documents through the, the Fish Commission, something happened on their end, we had to re-sign documents, and they have to start their process over again. We're not gonna be working on it till next summer anyway, because...
As far as meeting with that Josh Ravens, you know, I haven't seen him out, I've been like, two or three times, but I haven't seen what second shift, I know, but he's actually the only one that didn't sign off yet, so. Anything else on flood issues, we good then? Okay, let's move on to combining the water and sewage boards, any update there?
Still looking for information, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, we sent a lot of information to Infomart that they've asked for, we've got a proposal from them.
Yeah. She's gonna, she'll sign order.
They're still waiting on the consent order?
Yeah.
Okay. We haven't got a signed copy of the consent order yet, because...
No, she won't give it to me.
Not, they're not allowed to release it, you're not allowed to release it yet, Primi?
I don't know, we'll take it out in the next meeting.
Yeah, I think, is that the last piece that we're missing?
Yeah.
Of what they're asking for?
Yeah.
So, if it's been signed on your part, I would imagine you, at the next meeting, could ship it over to us, you know, I mean, should be...
Should be.
It should be on file now, if it's signed.
The volunteer, some of this.
Really?
Yeah. Jack is...
Other than that, there's nothing new on that, on the subject.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
You haven't been coming here to these meetings now for 25 months consecutive, okay? Every, every meeting, we've talked about sewer and water authority, and the fact that they're looking to merge, okay, the supervisor's looking to merge. The point is, is that, in all these meetings, okay, I have never heard one good paper or any putout that says why it's beneficial for this to happen. Nor have I heard anybody say anything about why it isn't, okay, with the exception of, I just don't want to do it. So I would just like to know what is beneficial, what isn't beneficial, you know what I mean, and all the facts you could put together and say, look, we could do this, or we could do that, or we'll save this, or we'll save that, or whatever, anything out there that you guys can do, okay, to make this come to an end. I mean, it's like, month after month after month after year, you know what I mean, and here we are, with the same damn arguments every time, that it was on the inside.
I think once we get them off, we can...
Yeah, right, we're, we're exploring an avenue on our own through the township here with this, with Infomart, this company, to see what it's gonna cost, but until we have a cost, we can't compare that. Um, I've spoken length over the last couple of years, that combining of services makes financial sense, um, as far as payroll goes, as far as equipment, man-hours, weekend work, et cetera. I mean, I think you can make the point over and over again about it.
Yeah, Jeremy, did you ever put it in a factual...
I did, way back at the very beginning of this thing, but it's a lot, I hope, I haven't, uh, at the meeting.
You know, Jeremy, I don't have a horse in the race, okay, as far as that goes, uh, but the thing is, is that, you guys, you need to shelf this thing, okay, or to put it in action, one of the, you know, it's just...
Well, we're still gathering information on this new possible avenue, and after everything that's happened at the Water Authority, I think it's a legitimate concern, uh, and something to research, is to look into this company.
Comes back cheaper than it's worth considering.
You know, we don't have the numbers yet, so we can't just throw it away and say, it's not worth, it's not worthwhile.
Maybe rename it, because combined...
Right, as far as combining water and sewer, I guess that should be a different business item at this point in time, because you both boards have decided they didn't want to combine.
And that's why I don't know if there was done on putting together any numbers for, because they said...
There was no work on there, on the water and sewer end of things, to even determine whether it was good or bad, which is a no.
No, that's not true.
Yes, it is.
No, we never ever landed this board.
That's not true, I got a lot of information.
Okay, well, sometime present it to us, we'll get you a stream or something.
You didn't present it, you said no.
We're the only municipality in L County that has these separate entities.
We sat down and discussed it in our board meeting, and went through this, that whole scenario, so. Julie, you can't sit here and say that...
Did you come up with an answer, Keith? Could you say yes, that's what we want to do, that it makes sense, or no? What did you come up with?
Well, that's a double-edged sword, yeah, we came up with no.
There you go, why bother? Why should anybody else do any work if you're not gonna cooperate?
That's not cooperation, that's a board decision, that's not one person's decision, it's a board's decision.
Okay, I'm just saying, there's no point in doing something when everybody resists, there's no point.
It's not resisting, it's, listen, you have a, you argued with me at the water meeting, when I told you that the sewer authority has 626 customers, and you told me I was pretty much a liar, because it's 670, yes, you did.
No, there's 670, water company.
But there isn't that many...
That's correct.
But you argued that.
No, I did not.
All right. Okay, no, Jamie, put it...
Okay. Sorry, I brought it up.
This stuff goes on all the time, this pissing match with Denise Funiello, how much did that cost a lawyer, please?
What was that?
I don't want to live a pissing match, but she paid her bill one time, and nobody from that water board went down and checked that meter but her. I went with her, not, not to get you guys, them goofballs that kicked out, they could walk down and check, they got off their lazy asses, but they did, but they bitched about it. They bitched that she, like, she wasn't, she wasn't using any water, doing something wrong. How did they know? They didn't go look, they didn't know she was using water, or not using water, because they ain't go look.
But it's over now.
You have to go inside, the luck wasn't in there. Yeah, we went down and...
Like, just like you said...
But it's a pissing match, so we're not...
It's over, Jeremy, it's over.
Yeah, and it's money, but it's paying lawyers to get that done.
Yeah, that's, I said, we gotta work together, so we have to have one authority to handle everything, right, we gotta deal, so, yeah, I agree, 100 percent.
How much did that lawyer cost doing that stuff?
Looking into it, Jamie.
Didn't that house have one of those remote readings, so they don't have to go inside or anything? No, we just went down and turned the water on, and seen it turn, it moved, but nobody else up there, yeah, but they bitched, they bitched about it, but they didn't go look at it. Hey, if you gotta bitch, well, look at this thing, you're on a water board. I mean, we're on a water board. I'm not saying I forgot, but I was at that meeting too, Dan, and the question that was brought up was, when they read the meters, the numbers didn't change month to month, so...
There's one person...
You don't have to pee a lot.
And she was quite crazy.
I... Wait, you don't piss a lot, they, that's something...
She only here once a week, she worked out.
Yeah, but their failsafe is to read the meter, I know, I, if, if the reader, meter reading is 900 gallons, and you go back three months later, and it's 900 gallons, I agree with you, Keith, the question comes up that something's not working, we, I agree with you, but why, they go, Ken, they wouldn't let them in, I respect that.
No, that's...
We're not, we're not gonna get into that.
That's water company, that's all.
Right.
And it's... We're still not even watching, it's costing people, it's costing...
What's Jack say about it? He was no, he was at all, he was no, we took care of it.
That's the original question that Jeremy said, was, we're waiting to get pricing from the management company, and see how that compares to the expenses, and then we'll let you people all know.
Till, till we get some numbers.
We'll let you people all know.
That's all we can do.
They stopped at the Water Authority, and we gave them what we had, far as to come up with figures, so we can't do nothing till we come up with a figure.
Exactly.
Whether that a yearly figure, what it's gonna cost us, and what the idea is, and went over what the, what they would get rid of far as, uh, workers, and keep the workers or not keep the workers, and we got that all squared away, I think, I mean, so, I mean, it's all down to the price, so what they...
That's all you do, see if it's feasible to do it or not.
There's no sense in paying, so we get a price.
I'll say this, if it's, if it's affordable, that's an if, it's very good for the employees.
Very good.
When I say it's very good for the employees, I'm talking about them knowing what they're doing, uh, having the support, uh, to not get into these messes that we've been in multiple times at the water company. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you, Corey passed his last test, right, so now he is, he can be fully licensed, when he, I don't know how much time he has, if he's, yeah, he has, okay?
He doesn't have much time to beat, because he's already been there working under all this. His license signature is very short order.
Right.
It catches out.
Which is great, but he's still 19 years old, and he needs that support system to become completely efficient.
I agree with you, I agree with you all, I agree with you, and that's, that's already on the table for him, to become a full-time employee, we talked about benefits, we talked about the whole package, when, when he has all his numbers, when he has to have all, everything he needs. Now, I, as far as I know, when I talked to him last, he got everything, he just waiting for, uh, the operator has to sign off to, so he can get his license, that's how close he is.
Right.
So, I would say, I'm not gonna say at this next meeting, but before the first of the year, he's probably gonna be a full-time employee.
Well, that's good, I mean, you haven't had a full-time license operator there for...
I agree.
Forever, really.
I agree, and I said this before, if there's an opportunity where he can get the lab back, I'm not saying he can, that's, that's, that's work beyond what this is, but if he's a full-time employee and can get the lab back, we can cut down the expense that we're paying out of the labs that can be done here, because we do have a full facility.
But we lost that lab because of these things.
We all, we used to... Listen, I'm not arguing that.
This is like a 20-year revolving problem here and there.
Well, it is, it is, so if you have one operator in charge, you've got one operator in charge, you don't have this, he said, she said, this one, that, that one said this, this one said that, you don't have that, with one operator.
What?
What?
Well, we just had one operator in charge at the water company, and it's, it's a consent order. We had one operator in charge at the sewer authority, and there's no lab there, and there was felonies.
There was two.
Two operators?
There was two.
Was not one of them in charge?
Yes.
Somebody had to have been in charge.
Oh, God, you know.
With, if all of where I'm coming from, this isn't the first time, unless we make changes. If you keep doing the same thing over and over and over again, it's...
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue that either, Jeremy, but, you know, you can hire an outfit from Colorado, and, and are they gonna do anything to it? No, they're gonna sit back and go, geez, I go home, Colorado, they hold it. People don't need shit done.
Okay.
They have a very good...
Thank you. Uh, Fran, and Julie, I guess Justin passed distribution?
He did.
Okay, so that's, that's a plus.
Yes, he is.
And this guy is doing very well.
Good, that's good.
He's even helping Justin out to go further with this stuff.
That's good.
So, we're, we're lucky to have that man.
Yes, we are.
Okay, we're, okay, okay, let's move on, we did talk, Cali Pike Bridge.
Yeah, wait for inspection.
That's all, wait, like I said, I was at the thing, mentioned that Cali's there about, can we get it inspected quicker than your D?
And I would just say, don't get your hopes up when they inspect, because there's a lot more trouble under there than, than what we realized after we're up. We did, we did what they want us to do.
Yeah.
After that last inspection, but it doesn't mean that it's gonna, they're not gonna come back now and say, number 10, number 15, and number 16, and then we'll, you know, it may not change a thing after the inspection.
There might be more.
Oh, there's definitely more, we already know there's more, but they were like, when they do this stuff, it's a right now window, a one-year window, a two-year window, a three-year window.
There's people...
They may not say, we're opening that up to two lanes and lifting, and raising the limit on it.
What's it gonna take to put a screen crossing in, so these people get them concrete trucks and...
Yeah, I don't know who's trying to get concrete trucks, and nobody's asked us about it, but they've been getting their essentials in one way or the other.
Put a screen crossing in, little bridge, is that...
That's a possibility.
And go all the way around.
You know, um, it's out of our hands, and, and Cali's near here, but I'm just saying, from what we know, we have to do going forward, they may come in and just say, well, we still want it to stay one lane in this way, but...
They have some work to do.
These others are done.
Yeah, Harry hasn't got back to you, I'm not the type to...
He, he actually called me the other day and asked me, and said, until it's inspected, we can't, you know, do anything.
Yeah, it just, I mean, and maybe, it will only go back up to, what was the tides before that, nineteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, so it'll only go back to sixteen, that's where it was before the vaccine.
Well, we'll get people fuel trucks.
Right, well, they got, you know, Fridays was real good at accommodating, using smaller trucks to get people their fuel and propane, and, you know, firewood, again, you gotta take it in smaller loads, there's ways to do it, it's not, it, you know, it'll be different if we were more warm with this, but when that company, when Cali took over, it just went from, uh, nothing immediately was wrong with this bridge, to bang, there's all these problems, and shut it down in one way. It was just a switching company, and switching.
I do.
But I'm, I'm still not confident that it'll be opened back up to anything until after this inspection comes back, and they're talking 60 days beyond the inspection before they'll give us a report. So he did say that they were, he, Brian said he was talking with the, their bridge people to see, because another option is for us to get a load rating from them, so he was gonna talk with them to see their availability and what that might cost. Again, I don't, he didn't get back to us with that, but that was an email we got at the beginning of the week. They could, they could put a load rating on it, which might be better for us in that scenario too, because seems like whoever's paying them is the one that gets their way, you know, unfortunately.
So, we can see on that, I guess that's all we can do, we did what we were told ahead of...
Right, we fixed what they said was the problem, but then they've added to it since then, so.
Okay, ordinance update?
Oh, um, in the last month, there was two different Frank...
Oh, um, in the last month, there was two new complaints. Um, we still have two existing complaints that are with the lawyer. There was one previous complaint that is now going to the magistrate. One complaint has been solved and closed. And there are two complaints that are now paying fines by the month. Uh, there's still the issue that one of them has, still has the garbage there, even though they're paying the fines. So I'll probably be going back to the magistrate for them because-
They were already at the magistrate giving the fine and still haven't cleaned up?
Yeah, so.
But they started paying a fine.
They're paying a fine, but they haven't touched the garbage. So I'll be going back to the magistrate about that. And, uh, there'll probably be stronger, stronger things happening there, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, man.
Why do they pay fines? Where does the money go?
I have not been able to get an answer from that question.
We, are you being, we get a certain percentage of it.
Oh, you're getting some money out of it?
Yeah, okay, all right.
Cause I asked the lady over there, Jamie, you know how she is, they won't tell you anything. All I want is my cut.
Just kidding.
Okay, let's move on to greater municipal bid.
Okay, after the last month, you said you had a township inquiring about, and then Boggs Township. They did look at it?
Yeah.
And nothing, heard nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Did they leave you any contact information?
I'll have to talk to Orlie about that, cause I left him here.
Who, who looked at it, Jeremy?
Boggs Township laws.
Center.
Center County.
Over around state, calling Jerry or something, and that area. Yeah, they were here.
And there was somebody from Maine or something, you know, or back in the people from Maine. I didn't think that was the one shot. Okay, so do we wanna put it back out? Yeah, we can put Iowa in for another month. Put it back out. In the meantime, I might contact Boggs Township back and say, hey, we put it back on, we just bid. Feel free to bid on it if you're-
Do you guys have a ceiling on it, or?
Yeah, we had, we had to put a minimum on it. Uh, what was the minimum?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve, well, okay. We put twelve thousand minimum on it.
They can't see it when it's on.
But they can't see that, it just-
No, I understand that. You know, if you paid for that, you're already going.
Nope.
And drink.
Oh, yeah?
Paid for Park Township.
Well, that's a, that, that's what they're still selling for now, is the over twelve thousand.
No, they're not selling it.
They're on the market for that price.
They're on the market.
That's of interest, anyway. And, and actually, we, we, we used it a few times since we haven't sold it, so.
Go down.
Yeah, I'll make a-
Hold on, you can't even.
I'll make a motion to re-advertise the municipal bid.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to re-advertise the greater municipal bid. Okay, now we're moving on to the Anisque bid. Three bids. Uh, this is from Ballmer Tar and Chip and Asphalt Paving, quote, one B limestone, delivered sixteen hundred tons one B within sixty days bid word, uh, to the building at twenty-four fifty-two a ton for Ballmers. The next one we have is from Bucktail Escavators St. Mary's. Uh, sixteen hundred tons one B, delivered township stock, sixty-day guarantee at twenty-four twenty-two a ton. And our third and last one is from Hallbakers. Glenn Hallbaker. Let's unblock in here. Okay, just the way they have all the plant stuff. One B from the Pleasant Gap, quantity sixteen hundred tons at twenty-eight seventy-five. They just have, prices do not include sales tax, deliver price in base twenty-two. They just have some notes on the board, but their quote's twenty-eight seventy-five.
No. I'll make a motion to approve Bucktail on a twenty-four twenty-two, if the law is.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried to Bucktail for the Anisque, sixteen hundred tons.
It's cheaper than one, yeah?
Yeah?
Twenty-five ninety-five, but last two years.
About seventy-ton cheaper. Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, the budget meeting. We have to schedule one. Usually the first Tuesday in October, and we always have them in the morning at eight AM.
Oh, that won't work again. What is that, the fifth?
Uh, let's see.
Is that October fifth?
I know, the fifth, yeah.
The fifth is a Tuesday.
I can't do that on the fifth. I won't be in town. I can do it any other morning. The, the fourth and fifth, I'll be in town.
You can move that. That's just another, that's just another one.
You're out Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah.
Wednesday is six, I know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We're gonna schedule the budget meeting. Will be on October sixth, which is a Wednesday, at eight good?
Eight five.
At eight AM. Okay.
Is that to generate a new budget or to check where you are on the this year's?
First, twenty-two, the new budget. We're gonna have it out in November, uh, for, uh, public view for thirty days before we can approve it. We have to approve by the end of the year. So October, November, December takes to approve a budget here.
That does, and does that apply to the other boards as well, when you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we're good on that? Okay, we're gonna move on to new business, Halloween. And actually, Halloween is October thirty-first, which is on Sunday.
And the Lions Town parade, anybody know?
Well, they shouldn't be, because they're making them wear masks in school, so.
That kind of guy, which they are. I mean, I haven't heard anything.
I haven't heard anything either.
Do we just wanna set that Sunday?
Sunday, what time do we wanna do, I mean?
Well, we always do, what, was it like five to seven, or four to seven?
We were doing like four to six, four, seven, five, just, yeah, I mean, I don't know, some daylight hours and some-
Yeah, I mean-
Four to five, three hours.
We always started doing it at four because of the parade, then the kids were able to go from one to kind of the other.
You see, about seven.
It's still nice for the little ones to be able to get out around with.
I thought they kinda did a trunk or treat at the school one year. Was that last year?
They do that at the Westland Church.
Oh.
That's usually, I think on a Saturday, maybe, they do that. So we good October fir- thirty-first?
Yeah.
Sunday?
We wanna do four to seven?
Four to seven.
That's actual Halloween, huh?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion for Sunday, October thirty-first, from four to seven PM.
That's fair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to have Halloween, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one hours, or from four to seven. Okay, we're gonna move on, uh, Water Authority Board Member applications. I'm sure there's three resignations. Okay, I'll start, uh, first one I have here, Joey Burdy Jr. from Wheatville. You have a motion. You have a motion for Joey Burdy Jr. You have a motion for Joey Burdy Jr. Move on to next applicant. Murray Lilly, Wheatville, PA. You have a motion for Murray Lilly. You have a motion for Murray Lilly. You have a motion for Murray Lilly. Third application is Nancy Rosman, Wheatville.
I'll make a motion for Nancy Rosman.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, this is gonna be for the twenty twenty-three term. Okay, because there, we have two other ones who are twenty-one and a twenty-two.
Is Nancy a family member also?
Family member of what? Of whose?
That's how most of them feel, family members?
Family?
Friends, friends and family members?
Yeah, they're all this bridge here. They're all my family.
Okay, I'll go with that.
Okay, now this is our add it, the assessment permit, which we added to the gen- the agenda.
It's the, um, triple nickel to build on the building.
Oh, in force, okay, they-
It's not in force, I think, I think there's a-
Or is it the one where the garage used to be?
They're gonna add on in force before they put in, yeah, they, uh, Jeff Glass, uh, it's triple nickel. They're putting addition on, uh, size is a nineteen, but actually, I think what they're doing, they're enclosing that, that piece or something, or I think, don't hold me to it. It's a nineteen by thirty foundation, concrete, no basement, wood metal, it's gonna be attached. Uh, type of construction, block.
That's gotta be that back porch.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, what it is. Uh, no wastewater generated there, no water service, because they have all that on in front, so that's-
That's their new building.
The one in force, they're actually, from the way I took it, what Paul said too, I think they're just more or less that back piece, they're closing that in. But they're not next to like keys there. They're not in plans in the future to put a new building on river road.
Yeah.
But I think that's down the road. Oh, the contract, I didn't see the name. I'm seeing, it's an Amish, I see names.
That used to be the back porch on that flip sheet.
Yeah, I think all they're doing is-
Storage or whatever.
Yeah.
He knows fish.
Yeah, so they're just closing that in.
It's already closed enough, you just gotta make a little-
Make us a budget permit.
Good. I'll make a motion to approve the assessment permit.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to approve the assessment permit for triple nickel. Okay, we're done. We have a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Uh, the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
You need adjourned at seven forty-five.